Frigidaire. We introduce the first home freezer. The first pulsator agitator washer. And now we introduce the Frigidaire Orbit Clean Dishwasher. Designed with a unique wash arm that gives you four times more water coverage for a consistently better clean. Frigidaire, over 90 years of legendary innovation. See the full line of Frigidaire appliances at Ventura TV Electronics and Appliances.
Hi, I'm John Malice. Welcome to this live edition of Connect With Me on the showroom floor at Ventura TV on this day. You're watching us on Comcast, Channel 187, 43.6, and 13.1. Today, we're talking about water rates once again. Will they go up? Well, eventually, they're going to go up. We have a first-time guest, a sitting member of the city council here in Fresno, to talk to you, the viewer, and inform you. 436 ME TV, option 11. Do call in. Back in a moment.
Tonight, I want to discuss the importance of a television medium to the American people.
Glad to have you along here on the showroom floor at Ventura TV on this day. Again, we're going to be talking about water rates, of course, and just want to reiterate here that we are on Comcast, Channel 187, each and every day, Monday through Friday here, and 43.6, 13.1, we're live. Hey, but guess what, my friends? The good news is, if you miss this program, can only watch maybe the first 15 or 20 minutes. You can watch the replay today at 2:00, 13:06, that's you two. Hey, and you can catch it at 8:00 again tonight at 13.5. That would be Biz TV, and we're all over the internet. Of course, on YouTube, we post all of our shows. Three years and counting, more than 600 shows. All kinds of politicians, sports figures, and dignitaries have been on this program. And today, we have a distinguished member of the Fresno City Council here who wants to run for mayor in a couple of years, and he just might. But first of all, I want to talk about the water rates and the phone number, 436 ME TV, option 11. I want to put up on the screen the original plan. Now, this was pre-Doug Vagum. Doug Vagum is the guy that took on the city of Fresno single-handedly. He won temporarily, but this was the original plan to raise the rates during a five-year period. Doug Vagum came along, he went to court, won all the court cases, he wanted to take this to the voters, he got the signatures, but he signed a deal with the city of Fresno saying, hey, okay, let's recharge. And so, they signed the deal, the rates did not go up, but then that lasted, what? That's going to last for about six months. And then the city of Fresno decided, hey, we're going to start citywide meetings, the recharge meetings. There were four altogether, including the one at City Hall recently. That was the final meeting. These recharge meetings were to give the public, you, the public, the general public, a chance to offer up opinions about what they think about the water rates going up and how much should they go up. So, in the last few weeks, the city of Fresno came up with Plan One. Now, that one right there worth $429 million over the course of the next five years. Or should they go with Plan Two? That's Plan Two worth about $406 million. This is the one that the mayor of Fresno, Ashley Swearingen, is actually endorsing. And so, you can see the increments, how much your water bill will go up each year for the next five years. Here to talk about this for the first time, he is a first-time guest, is Lee Brand. He is the city councilman, and he's in his sixth year now, got a couple of years left, and then thinking about maybe running for the mayor of Fresno. We're going to be here. Your phone calls are important, 436 ME TV, option 11. Do join the conversation. Hey, this affects you, the viewer, at home, the city of Fresno, and the water rates. Back in just a moment.
The Ballad of Andy and Barney. Andy and Barney were lawmen, bravest you ever did see. Born Deborah Crook in the record book to stay out of Mayberry. They were the law.
Yes, they were the law, and they didn't know fear.
The Andy Griffith Show.
I guess to sum it up, you could say there's three reasons why there's so little crime in Mayberry. There's Andy, and there's me, and baby makes three.
Now on ME TV Fresno.
Back here on the program. How many times have we talked about water rates here on the program, on Connect With Me? So many times, it's, I lost track, too many to count. But Lee Brand is a first-time guest here. I'm glad to have you, sir. How are you?
You're welcome. Great, thanks for having me.
Good to see you. All right, so let's talk about, now, before we get into the water rates, and I know we're going to get some phone calls here eventually, talking about these water rates, we always do. Tomorrow, there's a city council meeting.
Yes.
Tell me what that city council meeting is going to be about. What will you talk about? What will be discussed in terms of water rates?
This is the start of the 218 process, that Proposition 218 says when you have what they call parcel-based taxes. In other words, you're taxed so many dollars per your land parcel, in this case, water, that they have to present a detailed plan, explaining what's needed, why it's needed, what the proposed rate increases are. And then the council, at the end of the night, after hearing public testimony, will vote, essentially, to say, let's take it out to the ratepayers and let them, they have an opportunity for a protest vote. So, we could say, no, we don't want, we didn't want to even consider the rates, and it would, 4-3, it's dead right there. If four or more of the council agrees to it, then it's going to go out to the ratepayers, and they'll be getting a, like a notice in the mail. It'll explain what we're doing, why we're doing it, what the rates are going to be. And they can, there's be a self-addressed enclosed envelope that's postage-paid, that they can fill out yes or no, and they'll send it back to the city of Fresno. There's roughly 135,000 ratepayers in the city of Fresno. That includes single-family homeowners and owners of apartment complexes which have master meters. We're going to give them till February 5th. It's a long time. That's up to, what, almost two months?
When you say "give them," give...
The people who, the ratepayers who receive the notice will be given until February 5th to return back to the city.
Okay.
Either a yes or no, or they just simply throw it in the trash. Last time this was done, about 500 people responded out of 135,000.
Why?
Part of the problem, this is, I think, where Mr. Vagum was, had a legitimate criticism.
Doug Vagum?
Yeah, Doug Vagum. It was sent out as part of a mailer that you normally get once a month in your utility bill, so it wasn't clear. This time around, part of the agreement with him is that this, almost like a jury summons notice, it's going to say, your rates are going up, here's how you...
It'll be under a separate envelope?
Yes.
Besides your utility bill?
Exactly. It's very clear, he's agreed to it.
Okay.
And again, there's a self-addressed prepaid postage envelope there. So, people have an opportunity, if they don't want their water rates, they say, no, I'm rejecting these water rates. We'll send that back in. If we get 50.1% back, or roughly 65,000 back, then it's dead. If we get less than 65,000, then we're going to have, come back probably early February, the council's going to take a final vote to say yes or no, we approve the water rates.
Well, let me ask you something. Who's going to count all of these returns that come in?
I believe they come into the city clerk's office, I believe.
And who's going to be responsible for counting those?
I'm assuming, again, I'm not positive, John, but I'm assuming city staff, and if it's like an election, and in this case here, it was so far off, it wasn't like an election where you have every ballot counts, and I'm 500 votes ahead or 500 votes behind. It's basically, you know, if we get a couple thousand back, I'll be surprised.
But if you, okay, let's say you get a couple of thousand back, and it's over 51% that reject this.
They only count the ones that come back. The ones that come back are nos. You don't, if you're a yes, you hold on to it. So, they're only counting the no votes, all they're counting.
Okay.
Okay, so if you don't send it back, that means either you threw it away, or you're okay with the rate increase.
Okay, I want to put up Plan One. We already saw the original plan, we've been talking about the original plan for so long.
Right.
Let's put up Plan One again. We talked about this in the monologue. This is Plan One. This is not the plan that the mayor is endorsing right now. It's worth 400 and...
Actually, I believe she is endorsing that one.
No, this one's 429 million.
I believe, I could be wrong, but I believe she's endorsing this one.
Okay, okay. I'll take your word for it. Okay, currently, that's what you're paying right there, $24.49 a month on your water rate. Okay, year one of the hike would be 28 bucks, then year two, and so on, and so on, and so on. So, who came up with these figures? How did you arrive at these figures right here?
Okay, this was a combination of consultants, like rate company consultants, engineers, city staff. They're analyzing the total cost of the improvements, projecting the cost, any financing, for example, the Southeast Surface Water Treatment Plant would be financed, the cost of financing, the timeline involved in doing this, inflationary factors. It's very complex how they arrived at the final figure. So, it's one of the changes between this time and last time. The first time around, a year ago, the assumption was they were going to bond out roughly $300 million on the Southeast Surface Water Treatment Plant and the related infrastructure. And that was basically going to go bonded, bring the money in, and the money's going to sit in a pot of money, and as we build it, we're going to spend it. That was, I thought, there's a better way to do it. That's sequence the financing in. So, in other words, if it's approved, and roughly $300 million is the amount to be bonded, that will be done as needed. This is a three- or four-year project, so you don't have to spend $300 million upfront.
Right.
So, you'll save a lot of money in interest rates by sequencing in the bonds, and maybe $100 million, 80, they'll eventually total roughly $300 million.
I want to put the original plan up, pre-Doug Vagum.
Right.
Okay, let's put those figures up, because this is what the city was talking about originally before we talked to Doug Vagum many, many months ago. So, current rate, obviously, not much of a change, 24, 49. And then years one, two, three, four, and five, you can see the increases there. Okay, now, let's go to Plan One. Go to Plan One, and you can see, there isn't much difference in price, and even if you go to Plan Two, there isn't much difference in price. So, what do you have to say to some of those voters out there, or some of those residents, and say, hey, now wait a minute, you proposed these two plans, and they're not much different from the original plan prior to Doug Vagum entering the picture?
One of the big changes, they went from basically a four-year plan to a five-year plan. By stretching out the increases, you can see incrementally, they're smaller, to basically reduce the rate shock. Now, one thing I'm going to say is that at $24, that's basically an average of a one-inch meter. Most people have a one-inch meter to their home, about probably 95% of them. These rates, even when they're doubled four or five years from now to $50, are still, would be the lowest rate in the state of California for any city over 100,000. If you look at valley cities like Visalia, Stockton, Sacramento, they're all in the 50, 60, $45 range themselves. Los Angeles is about $100, Santa Barbara's over $100. There was an article in the paper, Sunday, about people who've got their whales are poisoned, the water's gone, they're getting private deliveries. Average person uses about 240 gallons a day.
Right.
Four people, roughly 1,000 gallons a day, 30,000 gallons a month. If you've got a private water company deliver that water, it would be over $300 a month. Our water, on a comparative basis, is cheap.
Yeah, okay. We've got to take a break. We're talking with Lee Brand. He is a city council member here in Fresno, talking about your water rates going up. 436 ME TV, option 11. Call in and weigh in. Back in a moment.
Ladies' night was started in his honor. Bar stools pulled themselves out for him. The only thing Chuck Norris is afraid of is her. Cheers is the most memorable bar in the world. You may not always watch comedy, but when you do, watch Cheers.
ME TV Fresno, Channel 43.6 and Xfinity 187.
We get our speed from mom and dad. They do stuff super fast. And now they got this new kitchen, so they're even faster.
So they can help us with our free throws.
The time-saving Frigidaire Gallery line, with a quick preheat and smudge-proof stainless steel that resists fingerprints and cleans easily. It's mealtime in no time, from start to clean. Frigidaire Gallery. Save more during Frigidaire Gallery bonus days when you buy three or more qualifying appliances. See the full line of Frigidaire appliances at Ventura TV Electronics and Appliances.
Back here, talking to Lee Brand, the city councilman. Now, Lee, they're going to build this water treatment plant over on the east side. Now, Doug Vagum has called this the sprawl to McCall, okay? He says the only reason that you want this money, this rate increase, is to build that water treatment plant. What will it cost? What's the cost of building that plant?
The plant itself, I believe, and the current version was scaled back slightly to start out at 57 million gallon per day capacity from 80 million gallons per day capacity. It'll be expanded at a later date.
But total cost would be about what?
That's $186 million, I believe. And then the cost to run about a 13-mile, 72-inch underground water pipe that would transmit the water from the source, the Kings River, to the treatment plant, which is in direct line with the city water grid, is about another $80 million. I believe the total cost is roughly about $300 million. Roughly 70-plus percent of the total project.
Why do you need that pipeline? Why is that important?
The original plan was to transmit the water, or transfer the water, using the canal. But the problem with the canal, the canal kind of runs a serpentine course. You've got to level that off, get easement right-ofways, environmental studies. I think that was, that's one good, by taking this thing and thinking it out, I believe the plan we have now is much better, because when you use canals to transfer water, every year, you're taking roughly a month to six weeks off to service the canals. When that thing is off, you're then going to your pumps, and you're pumping water and costing money. So, you're trying to take away the advantage of not having a surface water treatment plant.
Okay, is part of the money going to be used? Because I talked to Mark Standriff too yesterday briefly, and he was talking about cleaning up the water system. And if we don't clean up our water, because there's PCP, and 47 of the 80 pumps that we have in Fresno, is that true?
Yes.
Okay, and so, will part of this money go to clean up these pumps? And if we don't clean it up, will the state come in and start regulating? Will the county come in and start regulating? What's the potential here?
Well, the big change between what we had before us in 2013 and what we have before us today is in September this year, the state passed a Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, which mandates that all users, both urban and ag, have to manage their groundwater. For every foot of water I pump out, I have to put a foot of water back in. We are overdrafting an average of 40,000 acre feet. If we continue, we're going to be out of compliance for the state of California. Eventually, they have the right to come in.
Out of compliance meaning what? That we're not cleaning up our water?
We're not, no, we're not getting a balance. We have to find a way to balance our, either through conservation, less water use, or infrastructure, Surface Water Treatment Plant gives us the opportunity to meet that state mandate.
So, there is a state mandate and a guideline that the city of Fresno has to follow?
We have a letter from the State Department of Water Resources that is totally supportive of what we're doing, to try to solve our problem of overdrafting our groundwater, because this is being done across the entire valley. We're, in the last seven years...
But why is it that we need that water treatment plant?
Well, the way it comes in, we don't have, we're blessed with this aquifer, and very few cities have the water contracts we have. We have up to 60,000 acre feet with Fryent, up to 120,000 acre feet with Kings River. That's 180,000 acre feet, and sometimes it can go over 200,000 acre feet. This past year, which was a drought year, we got about 65,000 acre feet. That water does, no, it's like the Temperance Flat. We can have the Sierra's packed with snow, water's coming down, San Joaquin River. If we don't have the storage capacity to use the water, the water goes out to the Pacific Ocean. This is basically Fresno's version of the Temperance Flat.
Okay, Doug Vagum claims that we're not losing any surface water, that this is all a myth.
That chart I gave you, we're losing, of the last seven years...
Is it 150,000 acre feet of water we're losing?
We're losing an average of...
Or have lost?
We've lost 80,000 acre feet per year. We prepaid for the water from both the Kings and the Fryent Authority, so, and they take that water we don't use, and it goes on to farmers.
So, you're claiming that the surface water, on average, per year that we're losing, is about 150,000 acre feet of water?
That was for the period 2007 through 2013.
Okay.
Because of the drought, last year was only 65,000. And of that, we can only process about 20,000 acre feet to the Northeast Surface Water Treatment Plant. We could process roughly about 48,000, 49,000 acre feet collectively from the recharge basins. That left a deficit every single year of roughly 80,000 acre feet. Over that period of time, seven years, we lost 558,000 acre feet. That's three and a half years of our water supply. That had we had that Southeast Plant online in 2007, we would have kept all that water, and we'd have, we'd be banked, we would not be in stage two of our drought plan, we'd be in stage one.
Got to take a call here. Good morning, you're on the air. Go ahead, caller.
Yeah, good morning. Let me ask you a question real quick. Now, on the waste treatment plant that you say that we need, I believe if you use the waste treatment plant, work out a way to recirculate the water like it's going, like you say, it's going out, not to be used anymore. A lot of that water that you've been sending out, you can retreat it and send it up to the farmland, because they can use that water as not a waste, you know, instead of being charged. I think the city, what they're doing is, they're charging us, senior citizens, we're in a fixed income, and there's a drought, okay? There's a big drought.
Yeah.
How can you justify the cost to get a waste treatment plant and not do something with it? The water, you can be retreated, filtered, whatever, and use that for farmland.
Gotcha, okay. Hey, great. Great question. Okay, what about those people on fixed incomes that might not be able to afford Plan One or Plan Two with those rates going up?
Let me first answer this. It's a good question. There's a water treatment plant, there's a sewer treatment plant, they're two separate plants. The city is building a wastewater surface treatment plant, it's called Reclaim Water. They can literally take the sludge and all the black water that comes down, and they can convert it to basically water that can be used for irrigation.
That's what the water treatment plant will do.
Right. But it, but there's contracts with the Fresno Irrigation District, there's contracts with all the water authorities. Repairing law is very complex. We just can't simply get the water and say, let's give it to this guy or that guy. The Fryent Authority and others will have, you know, claims on that water. The cost of a sewer treatment plant is no less expensive than a cost of a water treatment plant. They all cost money, but they're two totally separate issues. And in answer to your question...
Those people on fixed incomes, yeah. What do you do about those folks?
First of all, let me explain. Half the population of Fresno live in apartments. They, 99% of those people don't pay water. The landlord has...
How do we, how do we know that? Or how do you know that?
Well, I, I've been working in this industry for 30 years. I manage property, I manage 5,000 units. I can tell you, apartment complexes have master meters. The tenants do not pay the water, the landlord pays the water.
Okay.
Roughly 110,000 residential units out there, single-family homes, where they do have the water, they're paying the water. Now, you saw that, that your rates, you showed up, that roughly...
Right, we can put that up again, too.
Yeah, the average person's paying roughly $24, $25 a month. Proposition 218 is total egalitarianism. You're not allowed to give low-income discounts, area discounts, the guy that owns a million-dollar house pays less than a guy that has 100,000. We can't do it, we have no choice.
Everybody's got to pay the same rate according to the law, according to Prop 218, right?
Prop 218 says you base your rate on your usage, so whether you live in South Fresno, North Fresno, a 10,000-square-foot house, a 500-square-foot house...
So, Darius Assemi, who's a multimillionaire, is going to pay the same rate as I do, right, at his home?
Exactly.
Okay.
But he pays on the volume he uses.
Right, but the fixed-income people are the ones that are going to be hurt.
But there is, there is an alternative.
Okay.
Okay. There's two things that I looked at. I did a Water Conservation Act with Councilman Capriolio about two weeks ago. One of the things we looked at was tiered pricing. In tiered pricing, it could be anywhere from two tiers to maybe four or five tiers, similar to what PG&E does.
Can you do that legally?
Well, you have to have at least, per Prop 218, all the attorneys, they want at least three years of experience before you can have enough data to scientifically and precisely develop the tiers, because tier one's typically, you're going to get a rate, if you're a low-end user, you might get a discount. If you're a high-end user, you're going to pay more money. So, we need to wait a couple more years to do that, okay? The other item, like, two ideas I came up with is, one, PG&E allows you to average your rates out. I'm proposing the same thing. Your water rate may be $10 in the winter and $100 in summer, if that averages $50, you can ask the city to average your rate out.
Yeah.
And if they've got time. The final thing, if we use other sources of money, general fund money, special grant money, insurance settlement money, that money can be used, offer subsidies for low-income ratepayers.
Okay, back in a moment here with Lee Brand. Got an open line, 436 ME TV, option 11. Hey, we're talking water rates for the next five years. They're going to go up to a certain extent. How much? We don't know yet. That's what they're going to be talking about tomorrow at the city council meeting. City Council Chambers starts at what time, Lee?
5:00 this item.
5:00, the item comes up. So, back in just a moment.
This fall, there is a place, familiar and inviting, timeless and warm. ME TV, a place all your own, that you can call home.
Hi, honey, I'm home.
This fall, home is where you'll find me.
You want me to tell me that's all there is to it?
That's all.
ME TV Fresno, Channel 43.6 and Xfinity 187.
A top-secret location. It's the spies who love me, bringing together ME TV's top super spies to fight evil at a memorable moment's notice. They're dairy, that's right, free.
Now, what are we going to do?
The best we can.
Swab.
Does that apply to me, Oscar?
Possibly.
And smart.
The yellow finger in the gun trick.
Maxwell Smart.
ME TV Fresno, Channel 43.6 and Xfinity 187.
Got a call coming out of break here. Good morning, caller, you're on with Lee Brand. Your question.
Hi, John, and hi, Councilman Brand. Nice, very interesting show today. So, I have a quick question. Earlier, and I did mute my TV a little earlier, so I may have missed a portion, because I just heard you talking a little bit about tenants of apartment complexes. Now, the, earlier he mentioned that the notices would be going out to homeowners and the owners of apartment complexes, and that they would be experiencing the increase. Now, for an average homeowner like myself, it means getting an increase around 20, we're paying around $25, and I saw the pricing. What would be an average increase for, say, an apartment complex with maybe four, six, 10 units, or even more? And if that landowner, or the landlord or the owner of the building is going to experience an increase in cost, I would think that as a, you know, a way to do business is they're going to have to, you know...
Jack up their rents.
...pass those costs on to their tenants, and which may be, you know, if they're already renting, a lot of them are maybe even already been on a very fixed income.
Okay.
That's my question, and I'll put the...
All right.
I can understand.
Thank you.
Apartment owners actually received higher rate increases. The reason why was, again, Prop 218 has got very specific guidelines. The methodology that was used to allocate water bills to apartment owners was actually, they were being subsidized compared to commercial, like retail, commercials. So, the rates for apartments are going up more than the residential rates. Each apartment typically has two or three meters. There's a meter for personal usage, a meter for landscaping, and a meter for fire. Most of the water usage is landscaping, not personal usage. I am a member of the Apartment Association, and I've attended their board meeting. This is a meeting with about management companies, probably managing about 80% of the city's apartment units. And I went there three months ago, and I said, did anybody do rate increases when your rates went up as far as rent increases? And they all said, no, because there's a market for us, too. We're all trying to survive. We're trying to bring our occupancy levels up. And I can't say every single person did that, but the, this group of management companies that manage the bulk of the units in Fresno did not pass on increases to tenants. That's part of doing business in the city of Fresno.
Okay. Thanks for answering that question. Okay, Lee Brand is here, four-three-six, MeTV, option eleven. Back to the water treatment plant. I'll go back to what, and you've heard everything Doug Begum has said.
Yes.
He says you want that water treatment plant out there so the, the city of Fresno can, you know, it's like a land grab. You've got all those homes that are gonna be built out there, um, and you want access, you want the rights, the water rights to that area before, say, you know, Sanger gets them or anybody else gets them. I'm using Sanger as an example. I don't know if they are. So that's the argument from Doug Begum. And, and your answer to that is what?
Well, I spent, back in two thousand eleven, three months researching Sega, Southeast Growth Area, the area east of Fresno, the sphere of influence. And basically, we, myself and Andreas Borges, can, our summary was Sega was basically an illusion. It was so far into the future, so exaggerated, there was virtually no infrastructure. The cost to build out there normally would be probably fifty thousand dollars per lot. The average cost at that point in time was eighteen thousand. There was no business model, no infrastructure. The MOU that the city signed with the county in two thousand three, I believe it was, says you can't even develop Sega until we achieve sixty percent infield development in the city of Fresno. And to put context into that, in the previous ten years, our infield development has been under five percent. So sometime in the next century, we might be able to build Sega. Sega is going nowhere. Sega, the only reason, when we got the MOU with the county, it said they tied to sixty thousand acre-feet of water allocation, to that being the city's expansion, this city's sphere of influence. That's the only reason we have that. Nothing is gonna go on with Sega for many, many years.
Whether this plant goes in or not?
This surface water treatment plant, and I'll say it publicly, one hundred percent of this surface water treatment plant will go to the existing city customers.
Okay. Caller, are you there? Nope, caller is not there. Four-three-six, MeTV, option eleven. Gotta be patient, okay? We might go beyond a little bit. You were supposed to leave at ten-thirty. Can you stay till...
I'd go a few minutes.
Can you go a few minutes longer?
Sure.
Ten-thirty-five? Okay, I do wanna play a soundbite from Tommy Esqueta. He is the Public Works Director for the City of Fresno. Recent meeting at City Hall. This is part of the recharge meetings, and we'll talk about that on the other side of this soundbite with Tommy Esqueta.
Um, I wanna talk to you a little bit about the agenda tonight, what we're looking at. So we wanna start off by reviewing a few items, just, again, what kinda prompted this. Uh, city council entered into a settlement agreement with Mr. Begum. Is he here tonight? He was told me, eh, Doug, Doug. Um, and as a result of that, gave direction to staff to kinda initiate some activities, uh, talk about our water supply issues that we've been talking about over the last three meetings, and kinda review some of the public comments we received during the forums. And we've been getting comments, email, phone calls, voicemail messages, written notes, uh, personal comments that you've made at the meeting. So we've kind of summarized them a little bit here in terms of, uh, kinda the general categories. We wanna review that. Uh, then talk a little bit about the preliminary findings and recommendations. They are preliminary. These are, you know, based on the things I've learned working with the, talking with the state and talking with some of our partners, hearing from the community at large on, on kinda some of the issues and concerns, you know, what my recommendations are for a capital plan, and then from the capital plan, drill that down into a rate plan. And these are preliminary. I'll, this is what I'll be presenting to the mayor, uh, and then the mayor will take these recommendations and, uh, work with them, and she'll make the final decision on what gets presented to city council as a final rate plan, capital plan and rate plan recommendation.
All right. We have a ca- caller, are you there?
Yes.
Yeah, hang on a second. I just wanna explain that that was Tommy Esqueta, Public Works Director for the City of Fresno, talking in one of the recharge meetings. We'll ask Lee Brand about this right after the call. Caller, go ahead. Your question for Lee Brand.
Okay, um, first, that, he's talking about flat rates, right? It's the flat rates going up?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, they're not...
Okay, then how can they say that that's based on usage? I cannot control...
I'll, I'll explain.
I can only control the amount I use.
That's a great question.
Okay, well, the, the, since we installed water meters a couple of years ago, there's a, like, they call a standby charge. That's the cost, just to have the entire apparatus, the water treatment plant, all the, uh, the plumbing and infrastructure, all the cost to maintain. If you look at that sheet, most of our cost is operations and maintenance. So if you don't even turn your water tap on, it's like thirteen dollars. But everything thereafter is based on the volume. So whether you use a hundred gallons, you're charged X dollars per gallon. If you use a thousand gallons, so everybody pays on their usage. Before we had water meters, it was a flat rate, and that wasn't fair. I could live and have a pool and have a quarter-acre yard and water every day and have ten kids who take one-hour showers, and I would pay the same as somebody with a smaller home, two people that try to conserve water. So you will be charged based on your usage.
Okay. All right, you will be?
Yes.
You can guarantee that?
Well, it's been, we're doing it right now.
With water meters?
Since we installed all the water, which was a state mandate.
All right. All right, you heard Tommy Esqueta there. He's saying that those proposal, or the two proposals, the two plans will go on to the mayor for her recommendation as what to do, and then you're gonna send those mailers out. Now, let's roll some videotape, uh, here on some of the recharge meetings. We got another phone call. I wanna ask you about the meetings, uh, some of the recharge meetings. There were four meetings altogether. I do wanna take that call real quick. Uh, good morning, caller. You're on the air. I'll connect with me. What's your question?
Yes, excellent show.
Thank you.
Um, how, how much does a developer actually pay their true cost of development? I mean, you know, they, they make, but extensions of water lines in or, or something like that, but do they actually pay for improvements to the system overall because of the new development? And should they be paying more or less? What's your opinion on that?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Hey, another good question. Go ahead.
That's a, that's a great question. Developers are charged, uh, the development impact fees. That includes water connection fees, sewer connection fees, police substation fees. There's a study, and in fact, by law, I think the Mitigation Act requires that the city do a study to analyze what is the true cost of, of a development coming out, covering the cost of the water, the sewer, all the infrastructure. That is gonna be updated. It's been a while since that was updated last, but I recall at the meeting that Tommy said that currently the total cost that's being paid for by the fees is roughly two percent, but the proportional amount of water being used by new development is roughly one percent. So that would indicate they're actually paying more, but by law, there has to be a nexus. It has to be charged at cost. So, our job is to ensure that's done.
Okay. Uh, great answer. Uh, let me ask you a question now. Um, I, I wanna get back to this surface water thing because you claim that surface water is going out. You claim that by building this southeast, uh, uh, water treatment plant, that will save a lot of water. Right now, on average, a hundred and fifty thousand acre-feet of water we're losing, uh, by building that water treatment plant, we'll only lose an average of seventy-nine thousand acre-feet of water. So we'll be saving quite a bit. Uh, but Doug Begum claims it's federal water that's going out into the ocean. It's not our surface water.
When we, we got, that, that period of time, two thousand seven through, two thousand thirteen, we averaged about a hundred and fifty thousand acre-feet. That was our allocation.
Okay.
We, we had to pay for it. The tax, I mean, the ratepayers paid for it. We were only able to utilize about fifty, about seventy thousand of it. So about eighty thousand of that, a hundred and fifty thousand acre-feet went back and was resold to farmers and other, other urban users. We paid for it, we lost it because we don't have the infrastructure to process and store the water.
Okay. So, um, the, the amount of water that we'll be saving, are we mandated to save a certain amount of surface water by the state?
Now, since the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act was passed, uh, in September...
Signed by the governor?
By the governor. We don't even have a choice, but before we could be foolish, we could overdraft, eventually have major problems. Now, the city, farmers, everybody has the same law they have to comply with. And it will set up in a matter of like five years, there'll be a, 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 a local agency that'll actually dictate what goes on. So we need to take the lead, the city of Fresno. And to give you one really good comparison, city of Clovis has a hundred thousand people. They have a surface water treatment plant that has a capacity of twenty-two million gallons a day. That's roughly one-to-five ratio. If we build the southeast plant at eighty, that'll put us at a hundred and ten acre-thousand acre-feet. We have a population of five hundred and fifty thousand, five-to-one. We're on stage two of a drought. Clovis is on stage one because they have the capacity to store their water.
Yeah, they're a smaller city, though. But here's an email question here from one of our viewers. Will the city of Fresno and Clovis, the city of Clovis, share in expenses for a southeast Fresno water treatment plant?
We had a meeting last night. This is almost a historic meeting.
Another great question.
First time, yeah, yeah, great. These are all great questions. And the city of Clovis, again, currently has a twenty-two million gallon a day surface water treatment plant that allows them to store water. So...
Yeah.
They don't have to overdraft the aquifer. We talked about joint agreements with the city of Clovis. At this point in time, they're not gonna pay the cost of this, but I think down the road, in the event we, we, we have a shared agreement on excess water, I think we can find a way on a metropolitan basis where the city of Clovis and the city of Fresno will work together and share the cost.
And you're claiming, of course, one final thing, and we gotta let you go, but, uh, the water treatment plant, Southeast Fresno, if it is built, will serve the existing customers, not for new development out of that area, not for Sega.
It's not, and Sega is an illusion. Sega is Shangri-La. It was meant as a redemption for all the bad things that were done for thirty years, the urban sprawl. But unfortunately, there was no business plan to it. Sega is many, many years into the future. This plant...
Beyond your lifetime in mind?
Well, I'm, I'm afraid so. We become immortal, we become vampires, live forever, so...
They're giving me the big rap here, but, Lee, uh, I wanna encourage a lot of people to go to the city council meeting tomorrow, and again, it's at five o'clock.
Yes.
And you'll be addressing the pub- will the public be able to go up and speak if...
Yeah, anybody is allowed to speak up to three minutes, yes.
Okay. All right. Well, five o'clock, City Hall. I, I'd like to know if you'd come back on the program. Did you enjoy yourself?
Sure, thank you.
Okay. Lot of great questions from our viewers, huh?
Yeah, great questions, yes.
All right. Sir, it's a pleasure and an honor to have you here.
Thank you, John.
Thank you very much, and come back again soon.
Okay, good.
All right, stay put just for a second. Yeah, go ahead.
Anything else as far as charge, I got a million of them, so...
Okay, all right, well, well...
But this one clearly illustrates what happens without a surface water treatment plant.
All right.
And the second one illustrates, if we had them online with a capacity of a hundred and ten million gallons a day...
Right.
That's what we get.
All right. Lee Brand, pleasure to have you here, sir. Uh, stand by just for a moment. We're gonna be back with our program. Our second guest here to join us in just a moment, Kerry Catalano. He was running for city council District One, but he's not out of the picture completely. He'll be working with the city of Fresno, helping you and others around our area. Four-three-six, MeTV, option eleven. Back with the second part of our program in just a moment.
You can watch Dr. TV on over-the-air channel thirteen point nine.
Welcome to a new beginning. An adventure that goes well beyond passive diversions. Empowering through exploration. Engaging your passions. Inspiring with lives lived outdoors. Come with us. Untamed Sports TV.
You can find Untamed Sports on over-the-air channel thirteen dot eight.
Attention, all units. We have reports of two motorcycle cops protecting California's highway.
That's for us, good buddy.
The men of Chips are on MeTV.
Hi, I'm John Baker.
I'm John Baker.
It's Officer Baker.
He's the blonde one.
Hi, there. What was it, Ponchero, man?
Frank Ponchero.
Well, I'm Frank Ponchero.
And he's the one who's Eric Estrada.
There's no way I wouldn't remember a name like that.
Catch the blonde one and the one who's Eric Estrada on Chips.
Now on MeTV Fresno, Xfinity one eighty-seven.
Frigidaire. It means the first refrigerator. It means a history of innovations that help make your home life better. And now we introduce the new Frigidaire French Door Refrigerator with over one hundred ways to organize for maximum flexibility. Built with adjustable flip-up and slide-under shelving and stackable crisper drawers, it's the refrigerator that flexes to fit it all, no matter what your day will bring. Frigidaire, over ninety years of legendary innovation. See the full line of Frigidaire appliances at Ventura TV Electronics and Appliances.
Euro News, must-watch news channel in Europe.
Back here on the program. Glad to have your phone calls. They had an open line, four-three-six, MeTV, option eleven. As you know, the election just over a couple of weeks ago, but it wasn't over for one race. It went beyond Election Day. City council raced District Number One. That's the seat that was being vacated by Blanc Jean. He's out at the end of the year, of course, termed out. Uh, and so it was Kerry Catalano versus Esmeralda Soraya. It took beyond Election Day to determine the winner. Esmeralda Soraya eventually became the winner in that race. Kerry Catalano congratulated her on her victory, and he is here today. And we're gonna congratulate you for running an honest and a heartfelt, hard-fought race, but it wasn't too nasty between you and Esmeralda. It was, it was fairly, meh, kinda calm compared to some of the other races.
Yeah, it was a calm race. I think that, uh, they raced her off with seven of us, and then it narrowed down to Esmeralda and myself, and I think we both focused on the issues. And then ultimately, after most of the ballots were counted, I won on Election Day by a narrow margin, but after the balance of the absentees and the provisionals were counted, she came out the victor.
So... Yeah.
Um, and, you know, running for office is just how it goes. Some, somebody has to win and someone unfortunately will not. And I unfortunately did not. I was not on the winning end of this race, but I'm still excited about my future.
It was close, and so what does that tell you, that, 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 not quite, but, but nearly half of the voters who voted, and we know it was a low turnout, voted for you...
They did.
The person on the losing end. What does that tell you?
Oh, I think that, I think that tells me that I still have a role in moving our city forward. Uh, I've lived in Fresno my entire life, and my message, my message resonated with nearly five thousand people. And I think that I was the type of candidate that had broad-based Republican, Democrat, independent support. I had taken positions that were pro-business, that my district at times was kind of uncomfortable with.
You think you had Democratic support as well?
I did. I did have some Democratic support, and while not organized Democratic support, if you look at the numbers and the makeup of the district, Democrats did have to vote for me, and they did. Uh, while my opponent had the larger Democratic establishment endorsements, I did not. That does not mean Democrats did not vote for me in this race.
Yeah.
I am a registered Democrat, but often I was accused of being a Republican, which is okay, because it's all about moving forward.
Probably because you're aligned with the mayor.
Well, I think...
And you are close with the mayor.
But if you look at all of my endorsements, and here's what I say about endorsements, if you have a candidate that is only endorsed by one group of individuals...
What does that tell you?
That means that they're unable and unwilling to work across the aisle. What my race showed is that I had Tea Party, Lincoln Club, Republican, Democrat, independent support. support. If you looked at my list of endorsements, it was a broad-based look of our entire city. That's what my race was always about. I've always said, living in Fresno and being a president is not a Republican or Democratic issue. It is a community issue.
Will it discourage you from running again?
No, I think, I don't know what my future holds for me. I own a business, I'm, we're doing quite well. As we know, I'm going to hopefully be appointed to the Fresno Planning Commission tomorrow at the council meeting.
I was going to ask you about that. So what's the process there?
So I was asked if I was willing to serve on the Fresno Planning Commission.
Who asked you?
The administration did, City Hall.
The mayor?
The mayor's administration did ask me, yes. And I said I was willing to serve. There were 5,000 people that voted for me because I think that the good, solid economic development is based on land use. I've always said the wave of the future is how will our city look 35 to 40 years from now? And the decisions we make today are going to impact where we are tomorrow. And the fact that I'm going to be a part of the adoption of the general plan is something I always wanted to be a part of, and the fact that at my first Planning Commission meeting on December the 3rd, we will be taking up the general plan.
Do you think that you will be accepted onto the commission?
I know many of the, I know many of the planning commissioners very well, and...
It'll take a vote of how many?
To accept the planning commission? I, well...
To accept you as a commissioner?
Oh, so, well, the City Council will have to approve my appointment at the City Council meeting tomorrow.
You think they'll get it?
Yeah, I feel comfortable. It's a simple majority to appoint me. I haven't heard that I would not be appointed otherwise. It's uncommon for an appointment not to be approved.
Okay.
But I, we're going to see what tomorrow, what tomorrow holds.
December 3rd is when you're holding the general plan?
A workshop.
A workshop on the general plan, obviously, for, for what year? General plan for what year?
For the City of Fresno, up to 20, up to 2035.
Up to 2035, the general plan. What is, in your opinion, okay, if you're a commissioner on the planning commission, what is your number one goal for Fresno? What do you want to do? What do you want to accomplish in your, in your time there?
Well, I think number one, the adoption of the general plan, making sure that we have all feedback from the community is essential. I think there's been a host of opinions about the general plan, from infield development to density, to how are we going to incentivize infield development? And what do we want Fresno really to look like 35 years from now?
Are we focusing too much on downtown?
The general plan just doesn't focus on downtown, and that's what I tried to tell the constituents when I was running for District One, is it really is, it's a master plan of what we want our community to look like overall to 2035. It includes planning West of 99, which is an important area in District One. It includes what we're going to look like in downtown and North Fresno, and where are we going to put higher density? Where are we going to keep, where density won't be as dense as it is in some areas? It's just a master plan of what, what we want our community to look like. And people should be excited that we're going to have an idea of what Fresno will look like 25 years from now.
What do you think it'll look like 25 years from now?
I'm certainly hoping it's a blend of higher density use with continued subdivisions that have land that families could enjoy, nice, nice spacious backyards. But we also need to focus on new development that has higher density. That is the wave of the future. We are an ag-based economy. We have to protect our agricultural land. We've got to protect our liquid resources, as you just talked about earlier.
Yeah, I know. We're going to talk, I want to talk to you a little bit about water in just a minute. But are we at a point, I know this is maybe seems like a dumb question, considering we live in the middle of California with plenty of spacious land, much of that is farmland. Is it, is it a legitimate question to ask, are we going to eventually run out of land to develop on?
I think that we, that's why we need to take the action that we're getting ready to take over the next couple of weeks.
Because it seems to me like we have nothing but space, but not true, right?
No, it's not true. But if you look at Southern California, if you looked at Orange County, for those that grew up in California and Southern California, they were...
They took over some of those farms, huh?
They did, and if you look at it, it's...
Did they not? My gosh.
Right, and, and they were primarily agriculture as well. And if you look at it now, it's just one community after another with no green space, no higher density. And we need to be very mindful. We are the food basket of the world, and if we don't protect our land now, which is the base of our local economy, we're, we're going to be in for some serious trouble down the road.
And of course, without water, we can't grow anything.
That's correct.
Okay, so what's the possibility of the City of Fresno maybe taking over some, some farmland to build on?
I, I don't see that. If you look at the, if you look at the current general plan that's being proposed, I think that...
It's not going to happen.
No, I think it's really being a good steward of the existing resources that we have at our fingertips. If you also go back to my campaign, we talked about how can we revitalize our older neighborhoods? How can we utilize the land that's within our current sphere and within the established neighborhoods? The City Council will need to take appropriate action to incentivize those areas of development. We'll need to lobby the state for some special tax credits to do that, now that the redevelopment agency is not in play. The current, the new council member in District One has a lot of work ahead of her, and I'm sure the City Council will be happy to do whatever steps they need to do to move our city forward.
My gosh, you're so gracious in losing. I can't believe it.
Well, here, here's what it is. I applied for a job, and I just wasn't selected. It doesn't mean I don't have a role in moving our city forward. Any candidate that disappears really didn't have their heart in it.
You don't consider this a rejection then, actually more of an opportunity, right?
Well, let's look at it like this. Was I really rejected? I got nearly 50% of the vote.
Yeah, like I said earlier.
I just was, I just was not selected. But the fact that I was asked to serve on the planning commission means I have something to offer the people of Fresno.
All right, got to take a break here. Our remaining moments here with Kerry Catalano, and he is wanting to be on the planning commission here in the City of Fresno. We're going to talk about water. The water rates on the other side of the break is so important to the City of Fresno. Back with your phone calls, 436 ME TV, option 11.
Almost time.
Now we'll find out once and for all about Clark Kent, Superman.
Look, up in the sky, it's a bird, it's a plane, it's a TV show.
Yes, but who is he? What's his name?
He's Superman.
Golly, Clark, won't that be wonderful seeing Superman?
Fighting on never-ending battle for truth, justice, and television of ME TV way.
No one can do the things that Superman does.
The adventures of Superman.
Now on ME TV Fresno, Xfinity 187.
We're back here on the program. If you've just missed it, you know, you can catch us later today on the replay. We talked to Lee Brand earlier, City Councilman, wants to run for mayor in a couple of years. You can catch us at 2 o'clock on 136 U2, and 8 o'clock tonight, 135 Biz TV. You'll catch the entire program with Lee Brand and Kerry Catalano. So this water thing, by the way, a couple of things going on tomorrow night at City Hall. They're going to vote this guy in on the commission, I'm assuming, and then they're going to talk about what plan to adopt for the water rates to go up. Okay, Kerry, we talked to Lee Brand. Let's put up some of the rates. We'll put up the original, then Plan One, then Plan Two. The pre-Doug Vagum rates are right there. That's what we used to pay. Okay, that's what we're paying now, 2449. This is the old plan prior to Doug Vagum. They want to go up, you know, five years, that they'll be 52, 26. Okay, now, that plan was scrapped because Doug Vagum came in and just knocked it out of the park. And so they came back with all these recharge meetings, and now they got Plan One and Plan Two. That's Plan One right there.
Yep.
And Plan Two, you know, there isn't much difference in the pricing.
Not much difference. No, there's not.
So what the heck happened in your opinion? I mean, I thought, I thought the rates were going to be lower. I asked Lee Brand about that, and I, you know, I don't know.
I think a lot of things happened in August of 2013. When I first started running for City Council, it was the same time that the council...
It was a hot issue.
It was a hot issue because they had adopted earlier that year the new rate structure, and the rate, the new rate increase was taking effect in September 2013. The public, here's what, here's what the challenge was with the public. Real proper education, the, what is the absolute need?
The lack thereof.
The lack thereof. Education number two is, you know, it's not that we don't want to invest in the infrastructure. We're just not convinced that we're actually paying for what we need to be paying for, and our developers paying their fair share. That was really the biggest concern.
You think those are the two big issues?
The third concern.
Wait a second. So, so you're, I want to, wait a second, hold, slow down. So you're saying that the voters aren't convinced that all that money is going towards what?
What the voter says, number one, we're not convinced that we need to be paying this much. Number two...
Because why?
Because they don't, they weren't properly educated with what we were going to be doing as a city. The city did not, the one thing the city did really well this time was educating the public on the immediate need of why we need to invest $424 million.
And the second one was you said that the developers are not paying their fair share.
A lot of residents, particularly in District One, are saying, listen, why would I be paying? And this came up in the last segment. They were, why would we be paying for a new treatment facility for new development? Developers should be paying that way. And a lot of that was because the city did not properly educate the community that, no, we want to have this, this treatment facility so we can store more water in drought years, and so we could, so we could provide safe, secure drinking water for you for the future.
So it's for the existing customer?
Or the existing customer.
You can guarantee that, right?
Yeah, I absolutely can. And here's what I know. Southeast, while many people need, think we're going to grow in southeast Fresno, the fact is west of 99 is really our growth area.
Really?
Yeah, to me, if you look...
Why?
Well, if you look at Central Unified School District, if you look at all the new subdivisions that have taken hold, we have to really plan properly for west of 99.
That area is growing out there?
Slowly. But it was, there was explosive growth during the housing boom, and now we need to go back and plan it very properly. You can't just develop in an area and abandon the area.
Okay, so I got two questions for you. Are the water rates going to be too high?
So it's going to...
The increases, are the increases going to be too high?
It's going to be too high for some families, absolutely. And I think the council...
So what do you do about that? A fixed income person?